Knock out, call to order the regular meeting dated Thursday, July 18th, 2019. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their phones, and if you'd like to speak on one of the agenda items, there's some blue slips in the back of the room, please fill those out and turn them in to Ms. Jessica before the item comes up on the agenda. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Father, we thank you tonight for your goodness, your grace, we thank you for all that you've done to bless this country, this city, this parish, this state. We ask tonight that you give us the wisdom we need to conduct your business. We had just asked that the words of our mouth and meditation of our heart be acceptable to you, Lord. We ask that you bless us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Go on, call Ms. Catherine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Gillery?
Here.
Mr. Landry is stuck in traffic, but will be here. Mr. Latour?
Here.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And President White.
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number four, hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. That item will be read at 6 o'clock, so we'll move to item five. Item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits, Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have one application before you tonight, and recommend it be approved.
I have a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Five passes. Six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and revised regulatory monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bears. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Seven, consideration of approving the minutes of regular meeting of the police jury dated June 20th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Seven carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 3618 Opelousas Street and Ward III, rezone from residential vehicle park to light industrial to allow light industrial development, heavy equipment rental. I have a motion by Mr. Collins to rezone, and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Scott.
Is that on the corner of Bunker Road, Mr. Connor? Is that where that is?
Uh...
The corner of Bunker and Opelousas? Is that where this piece of property was located?
Yes, it's right near the interstate.
So, and we maintain that entire area, Mr. Connor? Is that... It's Opelousas and Bunker Road, underneath the overpass right there?
Not under the... Not under the underpass, no. I think Opelousas is a state route.
But the... So, we don't... So, that... Because I was fixing to say, it's a terrible spot right there, and now you're going to do more heavy equipment there? I was just asking that. We can at least look at it, even if it is a state, and maybe bring up a few comments for them?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Guidry.
Didn't the guy try to put some travel trailers there on that corner, and he got approved? Or he just didn't go through?
Well, that's what they rezoned it to the last time, was for an RV park, Mr. Gillery, and so evidently they didn't pursue that, and so now they're going back and wanting to rezone it.
Okay, all right.
And it's a consistent land use pattern. The light industrial classification is consistent.
Do we have any further discussions? Any objection? Item eight is rezoned. Item nine, consideration of adopting the ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 6212 and 6240, Comanche Street, Ward III, rezone from general commercial to light industrial to allow light industrial development, truck driving school. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have discussion? Mr. Scott.
Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir.
So, obviously, it's already in... They've been using this for a month or two now, so I know you're talking about your occupational license, you've got to do all these things. What kind of screening are we talking about on that property? Anything? I mean, it says right here that, you know, you're going to be... The screening must be provided in accordance with our ordinances, so are we requiring something of it?
Yeah, on the western side of the property, where it's adjacent to the mixed residential property, there would have to be some screening.
Nothing to beautify the front of it, like we've been asking the other industrial companies that have, for the most part, been agreeing? You think...
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, we could have got a little bit of... We could go back to that picture, Mr.... We could have got a little bit of something that would have dressed up the front, you know, and everyone else that we've asked along there in these situations have done that, so... Is the owner here tonight, by chance, since they're required to be?
Not sure if the applicant is here.
You know, I've been...
Ms. Bassoni, she represents the applicant.
It's your pleasure, Mr. President, if it's all right.
Name and address for the record, please.
Robin Bassoni, 1010 Lakeland Drive, Lake Charles.
Ms. Bassoni, I've been chewing on this one for a day or so. Normally, I get a phone call from applicants when they're trying to change something this drastic, and I try to work a little bit for the entire surrounding area to see if there's something we can do to get a little bit of beautification or just dress it up a bit. Well, this one went into operation prior to even anything being rezoned, obviously, so, you know, I always have a heartburn with that. I know our system is put in place to kind of work with people, but, you know, you think this... You think they would be interested in doing some kind of landscaping or some kind of beautification or a monument sign, anything to kind of dress this facility up?
I am not authorized to make that type of offer on the table tonight. I know that we are willing to meet all of the permitting requirements of the parish, and when you make that application, we will handle all of those.
Yeah, these are them situations I just hate, you know? I'm already doing it, can y'all help me out, you know? It happens, but, you know, I'm almost... Would like to withdraw my motion to be able to at least chat with them. I'm probably not going to do that, but, you know, I get heartburn in these kind of situations. You know, this was one of the chances we had to help Gulf Highway out, dress it up a little bit, clean it up, and I'm going to have to pass on it, and I don't like it. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. We need more action.
Mr. Bears.
So, these folks have been operating already?
We haven't authorized the operation.
Well, I mean, I think we need to authorize the operation before we... I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is kind of out of order, you know? Are they... Do we have like a cease work order until we get everything situated, or...
I was... I'm not aware that they were operating, you know, at that location yet.
They operate. I mean, can Ms. Bassoni possibly shed some light on that?
They have been operating, and they did not obtain an occupational license prior to operating. We worked... This property is owned by Abraham V. You'll see that in your documents. It is leased to James Poussin. He... We worked with another applicant to obtain an occupational license about six or seven months ago, and by the time we got the license, they closed. They quit operating. Mr. Poussin sought another leaseor and did that, and then said, "Oh, by the way, my new leaseor needs an occupational license." And when we worked to obtain that occupational license is when we found out that a driving school is... This was not zoned for a truck driving school. So, we met with the zoning staff in order to, you know, get the property correct. But yes, they did begin operating before getting an occupational license. So, we are working towards reaching that finish line, and this is our first hurdle to cross.
Okey dokey.
Mr. Landry, sir.
And I apologize for being late. There's a motion on the floor to accept it?
I'll let you finish.
And it's an after the fact, and it's already been operating evidently, without a business license? That's unbelievable.
I think so.
I don't know how somebody in this day and age can even say, "Well, I didn't know any better." I mean, really, how do you not know that you need that? So, if you don't have an occupational license, you're not even registered with the school board, the sales tax office, or anything else. Wouldn't we all like to operate like that? That's just not good.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Gabb, if I continue on with the motion, but I add a stipulation, but because I don't know what they're willing to agree to, on some kind of landscaping or privacy fencing to the backside of the, you know, office, just to... I mean, it's our one chance to dress up one spot, and I've been working at this for years, dressing that area, so...
Well, Mr. Scott, and I always do get a little uncomfortable when we start trying to make conditions on the fly.
But I like it.
If you're not comfortable proceeding tonight, the proper action would be to motion to defer.
Well, then, I'll remove my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Well, really, no need to withdraw anything, just if you want to make a motion to defer, that would take precedence over the main motion.
Well, that's easy enough, so I'll make a motion to defer till our next meeting. I don't have to go 30 days. I think with Mr. Crane, we can get together with the owners, come up with something that we can... I'm not asking for a lot, but anything is going to be better than what we have there, so it's till our next meeting?
We have a motion to defer to our next meeting and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have any discussion on the deferral?
Love to come in.
Mr. Guidry.
Um, I totally agree with Mr. Landry. And Ms. Bassoni, by no means are we taking shots at you. We know... By no means. I'm just surprised that the owner is not here. That's what kind of surprises me, because what that does to me as a juror, that tells me it's not really that important anymore. I can do what I want to do, and I hope that's not the case, but being here would have meant a lot to me as to how I would look at this situation as a whole. But by no means, we know you're just a messenger, but please, have them get in contact with our people so that we can come to some kind of agreement with this, because I'm like Mr. Landry. Wouldn't we all like to operate like that? Thank you, Mr. President.
Save the best for last, Mr. Andrew Pont.
I'm really appalled that we wait till the 11th hour to discuss this issue. We bring it to the floor at 11th hour. What in the world has been going on in the background? Maybe you have an answer, Mr. Scott.
I do got an answer.
Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nobody's called me. It ain't my job to reach out to people. I mean, I got a phone number.
I'm not blaming you.
So, I'm just saying, if they would have called me or asked me, so I'm not the one to tell them to get their occupational... We've got ordinances that are to be followed. I'm not the boss, I don't do those things, but I wish they would have called me. We'd have fixed this. I wish they'd have been here tonight. I bet we'd fix it. It's that simple a problem. But Gulf Highway is an important corridor for this region, and if we keep letting it just get worse, in my opinion, these little pieces, all are going to matter one day. It's the little things that help, and that's why I was going to pass it, but after hearing some of my jurors at least agreeing with me in the 11th hour, I'm willing to wait a day or two. They're going to operate anyway. I doubt they're going to close the doors.
Can I respond?
Mr. Andrew Pont.
At one time, what you said is true. At one time, the applicants used to get in touch with the respective juror of the district the issue was taking to take place. That has slipped through the cracks. I don't know how or why, but I understand, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is an issue that we should be in the loop from the get-go and not wait till 11th hour to be stuck discussing issue that should have been resolved a long time ago. And I don't know how you operate without an occupational license, but I guess that's a topic for another day. I yield back.
Mr. Landry.
I was just going to add, somebody needs to go out there, and if they are operating, needs to shut that place down.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that should not be happening. Everybody else follows the rules around here. I mean, how do you tell this business guy, you've got to follow the rules, and then you find out that this other fella isn't, and you don't do anything about it? That's not fair to everybody that is doing what they're supposed to do.
Mr. Scott.
I was just looking for some landscaping. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do we have any further discussion?
That's it.
This item is deferred to the next meeting. Do we... Oh. Do you have anything else to add, Mr.?
I would. I would like to add something.
Okay.
The business... The truck driving school started in the seed center, and so they did have an office, so I imagine they are set up with all of the proper tax authorities. So, this was just for them to move out and do some driving. I also want to make a note that if any of you know this property from before, this was Annie's Lounge, and if anybody would argue that in the last 18 months, this property is greatly improved, greatly improved.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Landry.
I don't... It's just getting worse. So, you're telling me they operated out of the seed center, which is there to help people get on their feet and tell them how to do things, and they failed to mention to them that they have to have an occupational license? Come on, man. What in the heck is going on over there? I mean, I know you... I'm asking you a question you can't answer, but I mean, my gosh, I thought the story couldn't get worse, but it just did.
Did I mention I was just looking for some landscaping?
I mean, that's it.
Number 10.
Mr. Scott.
Did I mention I was just looking for some landscaping? Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any objection? This item is deferred.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Item 10, consideration of adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 6452 to rezone 1.43 acres from single-family residential to light commercial to allow commercial development, convenience store.
I move to overturn.
We have a motion to overturn.
The planning and zoning board?
There is no...
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
We don't do that. We either rezoning or not rezoning.
Okay, well, then I will not to rezon.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to deny rezoning. We do have some speakers on this. Ms. Trimmie.
Mr. President, I do need to abstain for financial issues.
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's what we have, or what I have. North Perkins Ferry Road is... My district goes to North Perkins Ferry Road, and I go west to the river in Ward 1.
And Cockey Road.
So, it's in my district.
No, ma'am.
It's close. Do you know where it is?
St. Kevin's District.
You know where it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, anyway, I do have part of North Perkins Ferry Road and west, all the way back. So, this is what I see here. I see there are two commercial areas in this area. One is a daycare center, and one is a... Where you store stuff, you know, one of those places that have a hurricane fence and you store your...
Many stores.
You pay to store your stuff. Okay. This is... Other than that, it's all residential. And I don't feel like that putting a convenience store in the middle of a... In the unincorporated area on a parish road, not on a 171 or whatever highway, which is a main thoroughfare, that it would be a good idea. I have a lot of people that own, that are very close to me, that, in fact, we owned a convenience store, letting you know. My daddy did, and we did. Tigerland in Dequincy. We named it Tigerland for the Dequincy Tigers. But you have a little bit of groceries, you have some Tab and Fresca, if you still can find it, okay? You have cigarettes, and you have beer and liquor. Those are the things that pay the way. There's not enough groceries in there to pay the way, just telling you that. So, this is in all a residential area, except for those two commercial areas that I just mentioned, and so I don't feel like this is an appropriate place to have a convenience store with... In a complete area that is nothing but really single-family homes and a lot of children. And I think that if they would be... What is that? What's that road over there? 378? What is that?
State highway.
State highway or 171, I would have no opposition to that at all, but putting it in the middle of a residential area, I do. And there's a lot of homes there, as you well know, it's very intense in homes. So, I do not think this is a right thing to do, and I think we would be wrong in our people if we voted for this, and that's my motion to overturn.
Thank you, ma'am.
And it was close also. It was 5 to 3, so it wasn't a... The planning and zoning didn't just red stamp it, so...
We kind of put the horse before the cart here, so... I mean, a cart before the horse, should I say?
Yeah, but I don't mind being the cart, because I don't want the horse up, okay? All right.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Mr. Tom Gale.
It's on the backside of the horse.
I'm good at that.
Tom Gale, 713 Kirby Street, Lake Charles. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Ms. Trimmie, just to start with your concerns, your district is farther to the north, and about six months ago, this jury approved the same store for the same developer in your district, and part of the planning, part of the reason of this is because this is a part of the commercial corridor that this jury adopted the ordinance and said, "This is a commercial gateway in Calcasieu Parish." And this is a designated commercial corridor according to your ordinance and your statute, and according to your map, this is hashtagged in as a commercial area. And the exact language of your ordinance says, "These are corridors that are gateways to the parish and should serve as an example for future commercial growth."
Maybe we were wrong.
I'm just saying, this is your ordinance, and this is your map, and we approved the store exactly like that, actually, in your district, just six months ago. And granted, it is close to residential homes. There are a lot of residential areas here, and that's what makes it attractive, because they're convenience stores and convenient to the residents, and that's where they want to be, and the market indicates that there's a need for it.
How many convenience stores are in Moss Bluff?
A lot.
Okay.
I don't know the answer.
So, they don't need any more?
Well, that's what the market is going to dictate, and the question is land use, and the planning and zoning board said this is an appropriate land use according to this commercial corridor. We've got... And if we see the zoning map, you'll see while it's not fully developed, all the red stuff on the west side of the road is all commercial. The gray that's across the road at the bottom, that's industrial. As you go up, it's further industrial, and that is consistent with the commercial corridor, and that's exactly what this is, and it's a commercial development of this corridor.
Okay, so what road is that you're showing me?
This is North Perkins Ferry.
All right. I'm listening.
And so, the red... They can build it as of right, on the red area on the west side of the road. This was originally zoned as a commercial piece of property. When the zoning ordinances were updated and implemented, they moved it to try to go into a residential use, and they got turned down as a residential use. So, now they're coming back in, asking to return it back to the commercial use so they can develop it commercially, and that's what the quest is here, and it's consistent with what happened six months ago in your district, just north of this, on Perkins Ferry Road.
Well, I believe what I said is true tonight, and I don't think they need any more convenience stores in those areas, and it's for the reasons that I stated. I think there are plenty. As you said, there are plenty, so...
I said there are a lot.
You said a lot, but I say plenty. A lot and plenty, we'll go to the dictionary and get that.
Ms. Trimmie, let the man finish, please.
All right.
And so, we respectfully request that we uphold the recommendation of the planning and zoning committee. A couple of stipulations that have been requested by some of the members. One is that there be an eight-foot privacy fence that is anywhere that is adjacent to a residential area, and we're glad to stipulate to that. The second... Or the second is already part of the staff recommendation, that's all inward-facing light. And the third is that a traffic study would be done, and we'll stipulate and agree that we will actually conduct a traffic study if it's approved and the development goes forward.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, all of those things are, you know, fluff, stuff that you're saying, because I really don't feel like this is the right place for this to be, in my heart.
Ms. Trimmie, you had an order, just letting you know.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll get you next time.
We do have some discussion. Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gale, just point of clarification. What was this area zoned before, single-family residential? What was the zoning of it?
It was originally... I'll ask you one second. The property, when comprehensive zoning was approved back in 1982, this property was zoned C1 light commercial. It stayed that way for about 32 years until 2014, when there was an applicant that requested to rezone it to single-family residential for a subdivision, and that never was developed.
So, the applicant is just basically asking that the property be reverted back to its original?
Yes. The original zoning classification was light commercial.
That's all I have now, Mr. President.
Mr. Brain.
Thank you. Can y'all put the map back on, the other map? No, the natural landscape map. Okay, anyway, okay, so the property on the west side of North Perkins Ferry, all that's industrial, zoned industrial right now?
Not all of it.
What's it zoned?
Light commercial.
Light commercial, got you.
There's only... There are two tracks further to the south at west of Mohican.
Okay, I got it.
Is light industrial, and then there's another track at the corner of Stafford and North Perkins that is on the northeast corner that is light industrial.
Yeah. So, by right, they can just build it across the street?
Exactly.
Okay. That red square, I guess on the east side, is that the part that we're trying to rezon right there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that... I yield back.
Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President. That subdivision, I guess it looks like a subdivision... If you look at all those two rectangles with all the small...
Southeast.
The southeast of that, when was that subdivision built? I mean, approximately?
Well, that's been... I'm not sure. That might have been in the 70s?
Seventies and 80s.
Seventies and 80s?
Seventies and 80s. So, prior to that commercial designation, when we did that?
It was in that same timeframe, it looks like.
Mr. Crane, can you hold one second? Do we have any more questions for Mr. Gale while he's up here?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Gale.
And the reason I was asking is because if this subdivision was built while that part was commercial, it's kinda like, well, they, they went to, you know, towards the commercial part, but I'm just trying to get a, a timeline, uh, thank you.
Let the speakers finish talking. If you have any questions towards the speaker, then we'll, we'll have those questions. But other than that, let's finish the, the speakers. Uh, Ms. Catherine Witherwax?
My name is Catherine Witherwax. I live at fifteen hundred East Lictie, which is where all this mess is going on. The subdivision south of what we're talking about, we moved in our house seventy-six, that was a tree farm across Powell Lumber Company. Whoopie, we were so excited. About two, three years later, they started clearing it, that's when that subdivision went up. If that was zoned commercial, why did a subdivision go up? This is all family homes, mobile homes, uh, town homes, other types of homes, but they're families living here. Parents, children, we raised our kids here. We wanted to grow old here. It's not the same. This is a family residential, it is not commercial. And they're saying, this is in with what going on here, it's not in with what's going on here. These are families. We don't need a gas station in our backyard. There are plenty of places in Moss Bluff to get gas, there are plenty of convenience stores. There's no problem, it's not like we have to drive ten miles. I could actually walk down to one. One and point, one tenth mile, there's a convenience store, no problem. And there's gonna be one across the street from it, no problem. I'm begging you, look at what area it is. It is not commercial, I'm sorry, it is not. Maybe years down the road, but when this went commercial, the home building should have stopped. That's it, this is commercial. No more homes built here. Maybe we could have sold out and left. It's too late for us now, we are stuck here. And our property value is gonna go down. Please, look at the area, think of where you live. Thank you.
Gab. Now, six o'clock, you wanna move on to the condemnations?
I, I think that'd be appropriate, I think this item might take a while, uh, and I know that the condemnations are gonna take very long. So just, uh, Mr. President, as
So as we stand right now on ten, we have a motion and a second to deny rezoning. Now we'll go back to item, was it four? And we'll come back to ten. Item four, hold a public hearing at six P.M., ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Item A, thirty-eighty-seven Highway thirty-five-nine, northeast Lake Charles area. Mr. Robinson, would you like to come up and speak on?
I'll take it.
Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir, um, these two cases that are before you tonight, um, they were deferred, uh, from last month's meeting. This gentleman that, that owns this tract of land here, he's, we've not been able to, he's never come back and gotten in touch with us or shown us anything where he's gonna make any repairs to this structure, so our recommendation is to condemn it and have it removed in thirty days.
Move to condemn and remove in thirty days.
We do have, it looks like someone in the audience just stood up to speak on it, are you the applicant? Would, come up to the podium, please?
They were here a while back, that's that little store out there.
Your name and address for the record, please?
Um, Mohammed Kabir, and the address is, um, thirty-eighty-seven Highway three zero five, five-nine, is that one? Or our address?
That's fine.
Yeah, he said, uh, he's out of town today, so I saw it at the door yesterday, I called him and he said, they was looking for somebody who can fix it, but, uh, he couldn't find anybody, so finally he found someone who like, and they're negotiating the price and everything, and he said they will start work within like a week or so. So he needs some more time.
So has anyone contacted anybody in our office? Cause I, I know as this case came up the last time, um, it was ordered by us and staff to make sure that communications between your husband and staff was, was handled, and this project was condemned.
I think, Mr. Crane
Has, has, has staff been contacted by your husband and we not contacted them back? Is that what you're up here today to tell us?
Uh, no, they contacted, I guess, but the thing is, he was looking for someone who can demolish the building and clean it up, but we couldn't find anybody.
I know we had orders, we had orders, within the, there was a timeframe that y'all needed to get back with staff to, to handle this properly, and that timeframe has lapsed, so
So we cannot get any, some more times?
We do have some discussion and some more questions about jurors, but, Mr. Bears.
Thank you. Um, I heard you, you were saying y'all were negotiating, I mean, if y'all are sitting there and it took y'all too long to negotiate and, 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 I mean,
I mean, I have this paper, you can see
He had, he had specific instructions to tend to this business. Now, if negotiations and he was haggling over price and things, look, that ain't, that's not, that's not our fault.
No, no, finally they, they found somebody to do it, and they just like met, I think last week they had a meeting with the guy, and finally they came up somewhere that they're gonna do it within like this month, they tried to finish it up.
It's two thousand and nineteen, I mean, there's so many ways to communicate these days, I mean, and someone should have said, I mean, he had instructions too, to, to keep up with staff. And, and, I mean, if he was having trouble, he could have got with staff and then we wouldn't be in this discussion tonight. I mean, how do we know, you know, how do we know this isn't gonna happen again, you know?
It will, I promise. You can see these papers if you want to.
I'm good, I just, I, I appreciate you coming, at least you came, I appreciate that, but
This is the receipt with the guy who, like, with the contract and everything.
Uh, Mr. President, excuse me, I, I haven't seen what, what she's presenting to you right now. The, the first thing is that we need to see what kinda repairs are gonna be done to this structure. This structure has been there for many, many years. Uh, we don't know what sort of, if they're, if the plans that they're negotiating are to bring that up to the code that we need to be brought it to. She's telling you that they're gonna repair it, but we don't know what the repair is gonna be. We have to know what that repair is.
It needs to go to Mr. Crane, he, they need to see it.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I probably need some time to review that, not on the floor.
It's, it's, it's tearing down. Mr. Crane.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not a repair.
Okay.
That's why we were like
Well, she said repair.
I mean, I don't know nothing, I talked to him on, over the phone, I saw the letter yesterday and I called him, and that's what he said to me.
Okay, that's fine, well, this is fine, we would prefer you condemn it and have that period of time, and then they can get it removed, and then it, it goes away.
That's great.
Okay.
So we do have a, a motion to condemn, which y'all are tearing down anyway, by Mr. Collins, and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any further discussion for the applicant? On the item. That item is condemned, ma'am, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Landry.
Mr. Crane, would somebody from your staff get her phone number before she leaves? Ma'am?
Mr. Robinson's getting that information.
Then that way, he can talk to her and make sure that they understand
Yes, sir.
That if whoever they're getting to do this, they got thirty days.
Yes, sir.
Thirty days?
So you got thirty, and, and look, they're, they're gonna make sure you understand that, but
Yeah, I understand.
You got thirty days from today, if that man doesn't
Okay, I'll, I'll let him know for sure.
Cause what's, that's gonna be a lot cheaper, if we go tear it down, we're gonna bill you whatever the contractor charges, and they gonna put a lien against your property.
Really?
Yeah, and it'll be probably, whatever that price is, it'll probably be about three times that much.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Then give me the information so I can tell him and show it to him.
Okay, and Mr. Robinson's gonna get your phone number, that way to make sure that you and your husband understand.
He need to understand, not me.
You need to tell him not to go out of town on the day he was supposed to come up.
Somebody's in trouble.
I, I, I just wish, I just wish, out of all the sixteen years I've been here, I just wish we could have more constituents like that.
Yeah, that, that was awesome.
That's all I like to say. You can't be any more honest than that.
Moving on to B, one nine-three Goodman Road, east Lake Charles area. Mr. Crane.
Uh, Mr. President, um, actually, we met with, uh, Mr. Collins and the, the lady who is trying to get this structural repair, repaired, we, we deferred action on it again for thirty days. I'm recommending we defer again for thirty days on this, she is getting ready to close on this property. The lady's coming in that
Yeah.
has sorta held her up in closing on the property, she's coming in tomorrow, and I think they're supposed to get it all settled out. And hopefully we'll get, get some action on that and get it repaired.
Do we have a motion to defer for another thirty days by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Fornum? I think the applicant is here, does she, would she like to speak on that, or is she good with that? Alright, thank you, ma'am. Item B is, do we have any objection to deferring it for another thirty days? Hearing none is deferred. Thank you. Moving on, back to item ten. Once again, on the floor as we stand, this, we have a motion to deny rezoning by Ms. Trimi and a second by Mr. McMillan. We do have a next speaker, Ms. Liz Long. Sorry, Liz and Zane Long.
Hi, um, good evening, uh, my name, and thank you for this opportunity, my name is Liz Long, plus my husband, Zane, and we reside at fifteen thirty-four Sony Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven zero six one one, which is actually Moss Bluff. Mr. Beras, I'd like to bring up something to you, um, you asked about how long so on so forth with regards to that subdivision. I will tell you that we bought our house in two thousand and four, and our house was built in nineteen ninety-four. And at no time when we purchased our home, and I've gone through that abstract plenty of times previously, was there ever any mention from the realtor or anything regarding light commercials surrounding our home. Um, on the other thing I'd like to bring up too, everybody keeps referring to, these two gas stations, those two gas stations do not have as many residential homes as what you're facing. If you see that little yellow square right there, those homes, that Sony Drive, that's where I'm at, at Sony Drive, um, that is Indian subdivision, and there's probably close to hundred and fifty, two hundred, two hundred families right there. That's just right there in that subdivision. So, I would like to first state that my statement has absolutely nothing to do with my candidacy for police jury for District One seat, as that has been brought up. My interest is my family, as we live less than one block away from eleven-thirty North Perkins. We are concerned with the location is close enough to literally throw a baseball and hit the proposed parking lot from my back fence. For over a year now, I have been attending these police jury meetings, listening to each of you and make comments, and I do, and I take my notes. Several of you have put yourself in the constituent's place and gave specific reasons why you personally do not want a particular infrastructure built in your neighborhood, or around your property, or within your district slash community. This is our residence. Now, I have been there for fifteen years. When you drive down North Perkins, ninety-nine percent is residential, single-family homes, including apartments and mobile homes. North Perkins is two lanes, one traffic light. There are still unresolved drainage issues on North Perkins on the north end, as you can clearly have seen from Monday's flooding. The one percent residential, right, the one percent that's not residential consists of Borghardt Electric Office, two churches, one daycare, one mechanic shop, two mini storage units, three small apartment complexes, and two mobile home parks, and one dirt contractor dirt pit. That is from the beginning of North Perkins all the way down till you hit the end of North Perkins and going into one-seventy-one. North Perkins has a huge traffic issue, fifty percent of those coming from north, from north, um, one-seventy-one Borghardt area.
Ms. Long, would you wrap it up, the council's saying it's time.
I'm not even close, I have two pages and everyone else has been able to speak.
We still have another speaker after you, ma'am. Three-minute time limit, sorry.
Okay, so let me put it into this layman's terms. There's a movie, baseball movie, Field of Dreams, and it says within that movie, if you build it, they will come, this is true here. If you build and expand North Perkins and the road for the infrastructures, then the infrastructures will come. You don't do it before, you don't put the car before the horse. That's good design, build, the need of many outweighs the need of a few, and those residents are the need of many. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Jared Martin. Name and address for the record, sir.
Jared Martin, I live at one-five-six-nine Stafford Road. My property is the property to the north of the yellow square. My property line touches that yellow square right there. Y'all probably recognize me, this is the third year I've been in front of y'all about this piece of property. Two thousand and fourteen, I guess, is whenever it was sold, and then the O'Neills purchased the property, and they zoned it single-family to build sixteen homes on it. There was not a one-opposition, you can go through the record, nobody came up here and opposed that. Well, something fell through, they couldn't do it, so then they tried to go to mixed residential to put twenty-four duplexes on the property. That doesn't match what's around there, you can see all the homes. That's right there. I spoke, Mr. Kevin, hours, I spoke to every one of you, I've called y'all, talked to y'all about this piece of property. It got overturned, planning and zoning approved it, police jury denied it. So the next year we came back, they tried again, they wanted twenty-five cottage homes on the three-point-six acres. Planning and zoning approved it, police jury denied it. I spoke hours with Kevin again on that, on the same piece of property right here. I understand growth and I understand development, and that's something you cannot deny, it's gonna happen. The property was commercial before, I understand that. I'm not against growth and development and putting it commercial property as long as it's in the best interest for Moss Bluff and the surrounding neighborhood. I don't know that a convenience store is the right fit for this. Maybe another daycare, a beauty salon, a strip mall, you put a plumbing supply store in, air conditioning shop, I don't know. I don't think a gas station's gonna work. And if a gas station was allowed there, would it be able to run twenty-four hours? Or would they have a time limit, shut the lights off at ten P.M., open at five A.M.? I don't know if that's something we could talk about. And then I know that the gentleman talked about the privacy fence, I definitely want a privacy fence. And I see right here that they have number three, the screening must be provided along the northeast property lines, but it does not say eight foot. I want eight foot, without a doubt. If this happens and something like this goes there, I wanna make sure that we can put it in writing, an eight-foot fence goes up. I mean, I understand growth is gonna happen, as long as it's in the right direction, that's all we can ask for. I don't know that this is the right direction, but traffic is a disaster on that road as it is right now. Two-lane road, Lictie Road is only eighteen foot wide. All them Indian streets that Ms. Liz talked about, they're twenty-one foot wide. How are you gonna put an entrance on Lictie onto that property, I have no idea. If a school bus tries to turn on that road, you have to back up thirty, forty feet, let a school bus turn. I don't know how they would do that. Traffic is a disaster. Try to get off of my road, Stafford Road, at five o'clock in the morning, takes you thirty minutes just to pull out. That's all I have.
So Jared, while you're up here, now that time's up, I do also agree that a convenience store is not the perfect ideal thing. We do have a lot in Moss Bluff. But here's a jury, like I told you on the phone several times, as, as the jury, we are here to only rezon a piece of property. What, that rezoning, what, uh, it could be a beauty salon, it could be a pet grooming, like we've talked to a hundred times about this. We don't get the, to pick what establishment gets put here. All we as a jury can do here is say, yes, it, it, it falls in line with the aesthetics of the rest of the place as far as being zoned commercial, which it is. What actually gets put on that commercial pe, piece of property, the market dictates what gets put there. You and I've talked, we've been friends our whole life, you know that. So as far, if we take the, the convenience store out of the parentheses there and rezon it back to C-one, like we're, the applicant's wanting to do, I don't agree with them having to come up here and tell, hey, I wanna rezon my property back to C-one, which it was already before, but we have to put in parentheses if convenience stores getting put there. There's a whole list of things that take a foot in, in that C-one. I don't agree with that, having to do that, but it is what it is, and now it's a convenience store, we all know that. So I, you know, like we talked before, it's, it is what it is when it comes to rezoning a piece of property. That's all we here as a jury to do. Thank you. Anybody else have any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
Mr. Latour.
I was just gonna say, do we have a site plan or anything? An actual site plan? Is this gonna have retention, or are they just gonna do like, is it, is it following the threshold for the twenty-two cent fee deal kinda? You know, just a curiosity, Mr. Crane?
They would have to apply for the waiver.
Apply for the waiver?
Yeah, for the, for the drainage impact.
I guess that'd be, um, possibly I could get Mr. Gill to come back up, or is that not the time?
Uh, ma'am, do you have any questions for Mr. Martin? Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Martin?
I have, I have comments.
Mr. Brain.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I think Mr. Gill in his presentation said that they were gonna put an eight-foot fence, Tom, am I right? Is that on the northeast side, on his side? Okay, alright, I just wanted to, I don't know if you caught that part, but I did.
Yes, sir, I caught it, I just would like to make sure, one hundred percent, that it is in writing somewhere, and that they maintain this fence.
Absolutely.
Well, if it starts falling over, you can drive down this road now, and look at all the duplexes that put these fences up, they're all blown over and people ain't even maintaining them, taking care of them.
Got it.
So I would just like to make sure that whoever does anything right there, they are responsible for maintaining this.
Okay, we got it.
Hey, Mr. Martin? About to call you by your first name, sorry. Alright, Mr. Latour?
All right, Mr. Latour, uh, could I possibly, Mr. Gill, could you possibly come up? I was just out of curiosity, I've been hearing a lot about the drainage, and actually, I mean, just last week, we had some issues with that Stafford Road, I'm assuming that's the same road, I've got thousand phone calls about. Um, what is y'all's intentions, are y'all gonna do retention, or are y'all gonna try to apply for the, um, the fee, or?
Being less than two acres, the, the plan is to apply for the exemption.
Isn't it three, three-acre track, or?
No, no, it's, it's, uh, less than two acres.
Less than two.
Yeah, it's one point four-three, I'm sorry.
Well, that, I mean, it is what it is, I know that's the, our new standard, but especially having an area with flooding or drainage issue, should I say, uh, without having a retention, that kinda gives me a little heartburn, I mean, is there any way you could squeeze some in there, is, I mean, I know it's a smaller, um...
It won't fit on that particular site plan, uh, because if you have to expand it, and these guys know better than I do, but you'd have to expand the retention area for that. I, I will say this, and, and it addresses all the same, similar issues, drainage, traffic, uh, that's an engineering function. And we're gonna have to go through the engineering process if we have the appropriate land use. And so, we will get there, and we may or may not get the exemption, uh, for that. Uh, same thing with traffic, we don't know exactly what the outcome of the, the traffic study's gonna be, uh, but we do pledge, and I'll stipulate, and I'll make sure we put it on the record, on one for the fencing, and two for the traffic study, uh, to make sure that that's there, and we're gonna have to do the appropriate drainage analysis as well.
Which, I know you're gonna do the engineering and stuff, but, I mean, I really like the zero impact, especially with an area that already has flooding issues. No, it's not my area, and I mean, overstep, but, uh, that just gives me heartburn, if we could, if it was a little bit more property, we could've did some retention, zero impact, especially, I mean, literally last week, which Kevin confessed just, I had probably twenty calls with Stafford Road for flooding. You know, it just, it's maybe a bad area, and I kinda feel for the residents as well, um, as far as the, the narrow road traffic, I know you're gonna do your studies. If it was next to me, I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't care what zoning said, as far as, uh, what it's, what it was previously, it's been zoned residential, the guy tried. Um, he needs to try to go residential if it was myself, but, um, I yield back, that's just my assessment, thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you're saying...
Is there a question for, uh, Mr. Gill?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
So, this, this property, it's had quite a journey, um, it, it can't get a break, I mean, I mean, what do we do, let, let everybody else pick what can go there? You know, it's, well, too many, too many, too many duplexes, too many cottage houses, um, no convenience store, what, man, what's this guy, what, what does he get to do with his property? What does he get to do with his property? This is kind of a property rights thing, I guess, if, if, if you're looking at it, I mean, like, like Mr. White said, we're here just to, we can't look at what's potentially gonna be there. There was potentially gonna be a subdivision at one time, that didn't come up. That could happen here. I don't know how, what, what the odds are of that, but that's what I'm, that's what, I agree with, with Mr. White, you know, we have to look at it. There's, there's all of this maroon, pink, whatever you wanna call it, all around it. Yeah, it's not the greatest, I mean, I wouldn't pick that either, but, at the end of the day, this guy's got to be able to do something with his property. So, I, I yield back.
Any further discussion?
I got, I got one quick comment.
Mr. Fornum.
Yeah, what he gets to do with his property is build single-family residential houses on that property.
But I said...
What it's going for. That's what he gets to do with his property, unless we decide it.
But didn't they, didn't...
It's, uh, I, I got, I got the floor. Yeah, and that's what the purpose of, of zoning is all about. And people make investments based on the adjacent properties that, that are zoned next to them. And it, and I believe it's our fundamental right to make sure that the character of certain areas stay consistent. Granted, the other side of the road is as pink as can be. They can build a convenience store right on the other side of the road, and it's, it's empty, and they have that right to do that. And, and they're gonna come jump in across the road and try to change the game after people have made their investments. That's, that's the trouble I have with, with the way we do zoning around here, so, I, I yield, I just wanna make that quick comment.
Mr. Fornum, you do realize that it was stated that this property was already zoned commercial for thirty years?
And somebody asked, and was granted the right to build single-family residential homes on that property.
I got you.
Now, they wanna change the game back because they don't wanna do what they requested to do the first time.
Got you, just wanted to make that known. Call to question.
Second.
We, I have a call to question. So, we're gonna do a roll call vote, Ms. Kathy, on the denial or rezoning.
Yes, sir.
It was a, it was a question called, Mr. Brain, sorry.
Yes, this is not...
I just wanna make sure the stipulations are in there.
Well, and, and I can comment to that, Mr. President, right now, it's a motion to deny rezoning, so really...
Oh, I got you.
If, if we attend to that motion first, then we'll see what happens after that.
Okay, this will be a reverse, uh, roll call vote to deny the rezoning request, not rezone the, the property. Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Avery Keys.
Oh, that's, that's true. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
No.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Gidry?
No.
Mr. Farnham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Barris?
No.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
No.
And Mr. Abshire?
No.
Six yays, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven nays, excuse me, the motion failed.
Motion fails, Mr. President, the motion fails if there's another motion to approve...
Move to approve.
Rezoning with stipulations.
With stipulation. With stipulations, and make sure that, that, the eight-foot fence is there. I'm assuming this property's in this overlay district, Mr. Crane, which is gonna take care of the lighting issues, landscaping, all those other things that we could come up with.
That is correct.
It, it's already in there, right?
Yes, sir.
But, well, the fencing is not in the ordinance, is it?
Yeah, the fencing's in there.
So, fencing's also...
But not eight-foot.
But not eight-foot, it may, what does it say, is it six-foot, or just, okay. So, we'll just add the six, the eight-foot, I'm sorry, to make sure it's eight-foot, which, uh, the developers already agreed to anyway.
Mr. Gill also mentioned a traffic study.
And, yes, and the traffic study.
What about maintenance of the fence?
Ma'am?
What about maintenance of the fence?
And, well, and, and, yeah, and the owner, uh, will maintain the fence.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Landry, if I might, uh, so far, you've made the main motion as a motion to, uh, allow rezoning with stipulations. A second motion would be appropriate now to amend that motion to add those additional stipulations, yes, sir.
It would be so much easier the way I did it.
I can take a stab at it for you. Uh, how about now a motion to amend to add additional stipulation to require eight-foot fencing as required, uh, where required by our ordinance, uh, and to make certain there is a traffic impact analysis completed.
If that made you happy, then ditto.
I'll stash the motion.
And we have a second by Mr. Abshire, so we could now vote on the motion to amend to add the stipulations.
So, make our, uh, we have a motion and a second to, uh, to allow rezoning with stipulations and additional stipulations. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Right now, it's gonna be a motion to amend, so...
Motion to amend.
So, there's a, a discussion on that, if, if there is not, we can take a vote on that motion to amend that adds stipulation.
Do we have any discussion on the amended version? Any objection on the amended version? Here none, that part passes.
And now, we can, uh, move to the main motion, see if there's any further discussion on the main motion now.
Have any further discussion on the main motion, which is to approve re, uh, the rezoning?
I have one thing to say.
With amended stipulations, roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Can I say one thing before we roll?
Ms. Trimmie.
Uh, thank you for listening, this is all from my heart, and it's for the people, and that's who I stand for, thank you. Okay, is everyone clear on the motion? The motion is, as I appreciate it, to grant the rezoning with the conditions outlined on the agenda, with an additional condition requiring an eight-foot privacy fence, and an additional condition requiring a traffic study. Is that correct, Mr. Gab? Yes. Mr. Abshire?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farnham?
No.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Guillory?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Mayo? Mr. McMillan?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Mr. Scott?
Avery Keys.
That's right, I keep forgetting, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Trimmie?
No.
Okay, you had three nays, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, yays, the motion carried. So, the property was rezoned with the conditions.
Thank you, ma'am, item ten is rezoned with conditions. Moving on to item eleven. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving industrial tax assistance application for Buffalo LLC with respect to the manufacturing facility which would be located along the east side of Highway twenty-seven near De Quincy. I have a motion by Mr. Scott, and a second by Mr. Landry.
Can I make a third?
I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Trimmie, I didn't even hear you make the motion, I'm sorry. Ms. Trimmie makes the motion to approve, and a second by Mr. Scott, about that. Do we have any discussion on this, Mr. Barris?
I'm gonna make this quick, um, since all this ITEP stuff came up, um, I've, I've looked at the process. I'm not anti-anything, but I just, I just wish, I wish there was a way we could actually see and touch and feel the, the, this advantage. I know this is a state thing, we're just kinda sending it on its way, but I think the people need to be able to see, hey, look, in ten years, or five years, it's gonna be this, this is what we're gonna get. And, um, I just wish we had numbers, you know, uh, so the people who don't, um, feel good about it could possibly feel good about it, just, there's just so many unknowns. I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, thank you, sir.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
I'd like to answer Mr. Barris's question. Five hundred and ninety-two direct new jobs with an estimated annual payroll of forty-five million, ninety thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Right.
Estimated, uh, project, one billion, seven thirty-three, five hundred million, staff recommends it ought to be approved. I think that speaks for itself, really, and I'm, I'm sorry to disagree with you, but I think what it says here puts another feather in our warbonnet in Couchoue Parish, and I yield back.
Mr. Barris?
Wonderful picture, um, it really does look good. I'm gonna go back to Highway twelve fifty-six and Highway twenty-seven and Carlos that just got repaid. That money was asked for in the nineties, okay? People say, man, why didn't we five-lane that? Well, because the, the, at the time when they asked for it, that's all the people, that's all the use that it had, that's what we got the money for, okay? None of this boom, none of this expansion, none of this is going on now funded any of that, okay? And, you know, my thing is, is we're, right now, all this other stuff, these folks down south of us, you know, get this, this, this exemption, like I said, I'm not anti, but it's just like, I wish we just had a little upfront, it's kinda like buying on credit, a, a shopkeeper, buying on credit. Man, the shopkeeper's sitting there, he gives you his goods, but man, the money's coming much, much later. You know, we're, our roads are getting used, our infrastructure's getting used. I just, you know, that, that's, that's some of the, that's the people that I've talked to, that's their issue with this, and again, I, I, I see, these are nice figures. Estimated, estimated, so, that's, that's the only reason I, I said what I, what I had to, thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Joe, I, I appreciate your passion, I just have a different view on it, that, that in order to get these type of opportunities for economic development, you have to ante up to the pot. You have Texas who's, uh, who's competing with us, and we have to do what we have to do to compete to get these jobs here. Uh, I hope De Quincy and that area gets this, uh, Steel, Dynamic Steel Enterprises, it would be tremendous, uh, for that opportunity. And us, in order for us to be one-on-one and fair and compete, this is why we have to vote on issues like this, and, and I see your passion on the other side of the coin, but, uh, we, we need this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, yes, it's an estimate of the jobs and the amount of the cost of the project and all of that, but I can tell you one thing, what's not an estimate is if you don't go for it, I can promise you, you're not getting five hundred and ninety-two jobs, they're not gonna build the project, and there's a lot of people in Corpus Christi, Texas, that's on their knees praying tonight that you're not gonna vote for it, because they want it. And they're doing all they can to take it from you, they want it down there, and believe me, they making deals, they gonna give them all kinds of incentives to try to locate there. And, you know, if I'm that company, I'm gonna go where I get the best deal, I mean, that's just how business works. And if the best deal's in Corpus Christi, that's where I'm going, it's not gonna be Louisiana. Hopefully, this is a better deal, and they wanna come here.
Mr. Barris?
Okay, my point was, I wish there was a better way that the state could structure it where people could actually see how this works. I'm not, I wa, man, I can't wait till this place opens in De Quincy. I'm all for it. I just wish our people could see the flow of money, and, and when, when you say all these jobs and these local jobs, if, I wish there was a way to track that. Who, how do we track that, the SASSO, all those companies like that, they say, we're gonna use X amount of these contractors, X amount of locals, X amount of locals, who's tracking that?
The state tracks it.
No, they don't!
Yeah, they do, I hate to tell you, but they do.
Nobody can show you those numbers. I yield.
Mr. Fornum?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I really appreciate everybody's passion about this, and I, and I understand the, the complexity of it all. What I like the best about it is that we do get a little bit of something, used to it was all, it was all or nothing kinda pie. And, and, and now, you know, we're gonna get seven percent, which is way more than we used to get. And, uh, so, so, I, I, I kinda wish it was eighty, but I know that in, in the bigger projects, you need a bigger percentage, a bigger carrot to throw at 'em, to try to get 'em here. So, I, I think we're doing all we can do as a state and local government to attract this, and, and hopefully, it's enough to get 'em here, because this is gonna do so much good for Couchoue Parish, and especially the, the Quincy area, to bring a lot of really good-paying jobs to that area, so they don't have to drive all the way down twenty-seven to come to the good-paying jobs, so, I yield, thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Scott?
So, as we look at this facility itself, I can tell you that not only do I believe in it, but I've made calls outside of our state trying to figure out, because it's a national discussion going on where this is going, so, I've actually done my best to make sure that my voice as a Couchoue Parish police juror and a local government is saying, hey, if there's anything you need from this local government outside of us discussing tonight, please at least have a discussion with us before you make this decision, because I think we're willing to sit down with anybody and everybody. This diversifies who we are, this gets outside of the petrochemical and the casinos and stuff. We need more manufacturing facilities in this parish in southwest Louisiana, this is diversity at its best. Corpus Christi, if anybody's listening, is a little bit closer in the wind load than what we are by the time you get into De Quincy. So, if anybody's measuring how hurricanes are gonna hit, that wind load reduces itself pretty good, along with the storm surge, pretty good if you get away from Corpus Christi. I'm just saying, I might have a point, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dilly-dilly.
Do we have any further discussion? Any objection? Eleven carries. Item twelve, consideration of adopting a resol- resolution ratifying the following actions taken by President White during, as a result of Hurricane Barry. A, July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, a local government proclamation of state of emergency, and B, July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, executive order two thousand nineteen dash zero five, which imposes restrictions of commercial vessels slash boats along the Couchoue River and English Bay Area. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont, do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor...
Move on thirteen.
For the continuum care program in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the grant term of July first, two thousand nineteen, through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, and a second by Mr. Collins, do we have any discussion? Any objection? Thirteen carries. Fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the submission of the grant application to the Employment and Training Administration for the workforce opportunity for... to the Employment and Training Administration for the workforce opportunity for rural communities initiative grants. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Fourteen carries. I'd like to ask for y'all to review the item printed below on your, for your consideration. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the item to be added to the agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Guillory. Are there any, uh, comments from the public for adding this item to the agenda? Seeing none, will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules and to add this item to our agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, consideration of adopting a, adopting a resolution invoking authority under the LCA-dash-RS thirty-eight, twenty-two, one, two, P, one, A, which provides for a declaration of public emergency for the procurement related to the repair or replacement of mechanical and electrical systems, as well as the temporary, uh, relocation of the southwest Louisiana criminalistics laboratory and further authorizing the parish administrator and/or purchasing agent to proceed accordingly and execute all documents related there, too. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any one in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Here none? Any discussion from the jurors? All in favor on the motion on the floor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes. Move to adjourn.
Second.
No, we still have fifteen, huh? No, that is, I'm sorry.